Welcome to our January planning meeting, today Tuesday 10th of January. Happy New Year to all here. First item is 5582, declarations for any disclosable junior interests. None, so thank you very much. 55922, apologies for absence, Karen.
Received from councillors Framed, Crawford, Downling, Paulis, James, Jovi and Park.
Thank you. So next item is 56022, the minutes of the meeting held on the 13th of December. These have not gone through full cancel, so hopefully you've had a chance to review them and happy with the content? So I have to sign them as true record.
Please.
Minutes. So 56122, planning applications to consider, first one being A1298. 25 Nunsscape, Tina.
Okay, so 25 Nunsscape, this is a single-storey, flat roof, rear extension and includes the demolition of the existing U PVC side passage, new windows to the eastern side elevation, installation of ASHP and PV panels and alteration to the rear garden fence. So that was the first one on the boards up here. This is the location map. And here you are, here is the... Let me go and have a look at this one. So on this, you can see the post extensions. So you can see where the actual... Well, that's not clearly obviously, where the extensions intended back to go. So the rear elevation doesn't make any difference. The side elevation is to the side of the house rather than to the back of the house. The third one along is the front elevation. And that again is the side of the elevation. So it's two. It's going to be behind that elevation plan. So this is the rest.
Comments?
There is no objections from any of the other agencies?
It's a flat extension on a flat extension.
It is, yeah. Too special, but. Happy to support?
Yeah.
Okay, right, move on.
1305 then. Change of use on 30 Raymond Street, this is a Breckland application which we had previously in turning the previous Bread and Breakfast into HMO. I think this one is purely looking at the back garden element cut to the rear.
So they've put through amended plans, and the amended plans are the proposed external works. And let me have a look. Yep, so the proposed external works and an internal change on the ground floor. Now interestingly, this has no objections from highways apart from the normal, you know, there can't be any overhang over pathways and that parking has to be laid out prior to commencement of build. There's no objections from the historic building officer. And yet it's been referred to the planning committee, which is on the 17th. But I have no idea why it's been referred to the planning committee unless my Breckland councillors have any insight to that. So the normal agencies, there's no objection from them, but it's gone anyway. Whether it's because it's a Breckland application and that's just process, I'm not sure. But that's what I sent out today, was it today I sent it out? But yeah, it's gone to the planning committee on the 17th.
I think that's right, if it's their own application, they're usually pretty good about it and they put it through the planning committee, which of course says yes sir, yes sir, but at least it's been through a public.
Right, okay, but there is no objections and we did previously agree to it.
So the list of external works are very much making good area, existing additional bicycle storage there. The only question I've had, that being through where they are. The area is large enough to accommodate, but doesn't seem to have marked where the bins are going to go. We want to make comment on that, but they'll have to have some kind of bin storage.
Yeah, supporter, but request suitable bin storage is part of the plan.
Mike, did you want to come in?
No, no, and we did this before on the Berry Road one, didn't we, about bin storage? Simply because it's multiple occupancy and it isn't just one family looking after their bins. So they'll end up all over the shop otherwise, if they don't. I get it's behind the fence.
So appropriate as opposed to suitable, appropriate, yeah. Due to it being an HMA.
Yeah.
Sorry Chris, can we make sure the bin storage is facing inward, it's not?
Yes.
Yeah, I think by the look of it, there's a gateway entrance to the car park. So somewhere within there, they have to be, whether they're going to pull them out on the day and collect them. It will be contained in that car.
That's good because we know how much of an ISO the bins are on lesser clothes.
Yeah. Okay, so I've put support, but request appropriate bin storage is part of a plan doing to this being an HMA and they are facing inward.
But also I'd like to object, the fact I don't like HMA.
No comment?
So go on to 1307 then, 28 Berry Road, a new detached dwelling for those that know the area. The Cuthbert Church sits, sorry, Mary's Church sits there on behind the wall. And then we've got Skinner's Funeral Service and there's a couple of dwellings between the two. This is put a new building in the back garden of one of the existing houses there. Tina.
So there's been a few comments on this. So the HBO has requested a street scene visualization showing the proposed replacement garage building in context. And it obviously has not received that and the contamination officer has given the normal advice that they put any unexpected contamination should be found, so there's no, but apart from that, there's no actual objection. One of the neighbours has objected, let me just get these pictures off here. It's a bit slow. As they believe that some of the elevations of the proposed dwelling will actually allow viewing into the living room and son's bedroom. Also, they fear it will block off all the sunlight to these rooms as it seems that both garages will also block my views of the road, limiting my visibility. Doesn't feel that the dwelling will be keeping over the area as it's a conservation area and is concerned with the closeness to the boundary of the building. But there is no return comments on this from the planners. Having said that, he says he's not totally against a new dwelling, but he just feels it could be better placed not to interfere with his privacy and something, which unfortunately neither of which are material considerations.
So the neighbour who's complained, is the context of where we're looking at there?
Yes.
It's on the back coming from town, is it, or?
It's literally... Without wanting to identify them.
Oh, it's that one.
Yeah.
So it's the building adjoining.
Yeah, building adjoining.
26. It's got the number on there.
Yeah. Sorry, what number, the person complained? I couldn't hear from you, sorry, what number was it?
I think the idea is we don't identify the individual.
That's another rough idea.
So, yeah. Nicely done, nicely done. So, yeah.
So comments generally please. Chris.
Well, I've no great objection, it's a big old space and give permission at the end of Newtown for them to build in there. Just seems a bit, they have to be consistent and say, you know, we can't, you know, the person number so and so in Newtown is having a house that we affect. I'm not quite sure how it would affect, it's a bit of a walkway, you can get through from there into Newtown. I'm not quite sure that's going to affect that. I don't think it's supposed to, but there is a way.
It may well be though, that's across private land.
Doesn't show in there, Chris, if I don't see.
It is a big old space and the bungalow on the front is pretty ginormous as well. Access onto the road might be fun.
Yeah, that's, I think the first garage access there, the councilors are a little bit dismayed.
Because you're quite close to the Mill Lane too.
We're happy to support.
Does it say what the building materials are?
So the existing walls, so it's going to be, the roof is going to be pan tiles, the walls are going to be brick. The windows are going to be white PVC, so it's actually using the same, so they're using the same.
Got to be the colour scheme.
Yeah. Although that may not be exactly, obviously, the right colours. So basically they're using matching like-for-like materials.
Like-for-like for the...
For what, yeah, so what they're saying is existing materials are bricks and they're using the brick, pan tiles on the roof, so they use pan tiles on the roof, so they're duplicating the materials that are.
The thing for me is when you're in an area like that, which is, you know, got a lot of history in it, if you put one modern building in, it looks a bit odd. If you put two modern buildings in, it kind of starts ruining the landscape. Once you get to three and then four, because you've set precedents, you then completely change the historical area to a modern building area with old buildings scattered in it. And that's my only criticism of it. There's no effort to make it look like.
That's already happened, that's a bit ambivalent, close. How they've done with the casting, so there is a precedent set for modern houses in this area. I didn't realise that that piece was a conservation area, to be fair, beside the church. I'm not convinced.
I'm not convinced it is.
Is it not because of the church and the old Berry Road?
Yeah, church and Berry Road, definitely being a conservation.
But that's just side to church.
Because the hole that's got the anchor side and that whole south side, it's not scheduled for. Can't recollect where.
The audience fairly sat back, isn't it? Impact on the streets, so.
I think that's right, but the problem is, it does set a further precedent, as Mike was saying. My inclination is to be a bit cynical about this and turn it down and let Breckland decide. I'm not sure whether it's a conservation area, it could well be and it could well be that it should be if it isn't. There's no attempt, as you rightly said, to make it fit in with the wider context of older buildings. So I think that's to be regretted, there's a lot of quality in this town which can be threatened by constant infilling and this is another piece of the same. I'm not really very happy with it, I think I'm going to say I would personally like to see us objecting to it on the grounds. It doesn't fit in with the better buildings around, I'm saying. Okay, so I think we need to decide whether we're supporting or objecting. But Mike's saying he'd like to object, I think Max raised a concern about that. So can I just have a show of hands if we're going to object? Against objecting, being supporting, but once point three abstaining. So both there, always to object. So we need to then specify the grounds, can't really define.
I mean, I'm just abstaining because I'm really divided between the nuisance that causes to the neighbours versus the fact that we already need permitted extra, building extra in larger properties. This is going to be the first one, I mean, from the size of the properties is massive. I just think they are trying to build a whole lot in one go. If they wanted to put an extra building or an extra garage in that property, which, you know, that wouldn't be so bad. It looks like they're really trying to develop the whole patch in one go. And I'm a bit uncertain about the look of it as well. How they make it look outside to blend in with the rest of the other buildings and the rest of the street like Macklinson. So I'm in between, yeah, you can do whatever you want in your property if you have a square footage, but at the same time, you have to be considerate of what's around you, so.
The historic building officer made a comment about garage.
That's exactly, you're right. You preempted me. But the HBO was asked for a street scene visualization, which shows the proposed replacement garage building in context. So you would be able to see what it looks like from this road because he can't actually see what that would look like because it's not scaled in the drawings. You can't actually see, you know, you've just got the buildings in isolation as opposed to the settings. So your objection, I would say, could be that currently you don't believe the development is in keeping with the surrounding area. And unsure of the effect on the street scene as per HBO's comments that is not available in order for you to look at. Yeah.
Happy with that?
Yeah. In the corner to get away from the bungalow, but as near as the neighbours as possible. Because they say maybe put it in the middle, I don't know, or have it on their side.
I think it is the way they place those things up, that extra.
Yeah, they don't want it near their house, but they're quite happy to have it near the neighbours.
Yeah, so yeah, question about positioning.
On a big plot, why push it right over into the corner is the question.
It's a large plot, so positioning could be improved?
Yes.
Just kind of valid, it's the comments, the complaint of the neighbours, which, you know, blocking them from sunlight. I know it's not a substantial issue for to refuse the application, but it's a matter of being considered with those around you. I mean, if it is really against the other people's property, no wonder they're going to complain, just blocking their views. You know, it's just a bit of logic. I think they ought to redesign it a little bit better.
Just summarise, Tina, what we've got?
Just left to give me ten seconds.
On an aside note, I wish when we get drawings through, and I know we've talked about this before, things like that are so unhelpful, you know, you can't make anything out on that really.
I don't think the plans, the planning plans that surveyors and architects prepare are meant to be councillor-friendly. Make us really think through.
I think there's an element of almost doing it to see what it can get away with. You're right.
And not, you know, because that's that, perhaps that's what it is.
If it's helpful, that's what the disney building on the side is.
Yeah.
Which has got no...
Great shakes, has it?
I think they could improve on that.
The old church wall to the rear, Dave, the old church wall bit to the rear is a little bit more of a...
Yeah, not great, I think, but.
But my point on this is, when that bungalow was put up, there wouldn't have been the same considerations to the environment as we would now. You know, we probably wouldn't want to approve another building that looked like the Carnegie.
Yeah.
But that was fine, it's fine, you know what I mean?
It's fine, something for each time.
But you've also got to think, well, it's not just the buildings next door to it, opposite on the other side of Berry Road, there's some quite characterful buildings there, which you're trying to keep that in keeping and perceive as a better, more pleasing to the eye, aesthetically pleasing, rather than just going with what the next door one looks like.
Over time, planning priorities have changed a lot, they've changed depending on what the people need, what the area, what is best suited for the area, environmental impact. All those things weren't really looked at 15, 20 years ago, it was sort of a new wave of concerns. And we have to take that into consideration when looking at that whole thing, to be reasonable.
Considering the price that it's going for.
Makes all right. So not in keeping with character of surrounding area and it is within a conservation area. It's a large plot, so positioning could be improved. Agree with HBO that a street scene visualization is required in order for an informed decision about effect on the street scene. So an informed decision about the effect on the street scene can be acetized.
On that, is it worth putting in there that it doesn't fit in with the heritage buildings that are in existence? Because if you're saying with the...
Or say, and heritage buildings within conservation.
Because if you say the other buildings, they go, yeah, but have you seen our bungalow?
Yeah, okay, and heritage buildings within conservation area, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr Chairman, can I ask you for instance? We run into the problem of is it in a conservation area or not? I wonder whether there's some way whether we could in future have a map available, some source of available, so that we know where our...
You have been reading my mind, councillor Randall, because particularly as potentially we may have new councillors standing here, if you all deserve it. And not, you know, but I'm trying to build your... But I think that we should have, we used to have, do you remember, we used to have paper documents? So you'd have standing orders, financial records. I think if we have planning policy and the map from the town, that would potentially, that's what dear Karen has been tasked with today as part of our doing those things. Because I just think you're not necessarily going to, I mean, they'll stay in this room obviously, but just about to just look at it and go.
But also I think we ought to have them on the website as well, so that if anybody wants to know where the conservation area is.
The reaction plan is on our website.
Just revisiting that one, I mean, we've been considering the new development, but looking at what on that top, we haven't considered the extra garage, is it the front?
I think, yeah, I think it's coming in the front.
Yeah, I mean, that...
Coming in the front of the existing building.
That was the one that I made a... We go back to this, the building to go.
That's going to be quite unsightly, that garage there.
Yes, the red dog.
The biggest even packed on.
Out. I mean, placement.
That's going to be, looking at that, that's going to be sitting right on the edge here, which I think is why they're asking for the screen.
Yeah.
So maybe that's going to be a really nice historic looking garage.
Could be an objection.
I mean, it is, that's the effect.
This particularly applies to garage.
You know, to the location of the garage.
This then, what's opposite?
And what's opposite is the...
The Mill Lane and the Flinners.
Well, there's the old car, which is brick built.
Yeah.
And then there's that.
But all the, but the housing, that's what I mean, the housing directly opposite are... So we can all see that they're built with white van.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the white van got in the way, I'll ask him to move.
So. Next one?
Yep.
Right. Do you want to leave?
And then to D1343, this is land with Breckland for two two-bed houses, land adjacent to 64 Lees Close. So those members, if you recollect that we had a previous application for this, which was a bit more intense in its development, they've now got two units. Our objection previously was including about the pipeline that runs along to the rear of those properties. The adjoining properties had a similar issue, which we've probably had. I've been contacted by residents of Lees Close who came en masse when this was previously up. They've been caught off guard, I think, about this one coming through again. And so they've contacted me today to just say that they're all against the loss of the amenity land. So I'll just read you what we objected to last time and see if you feel that these are still valid. So the previous objection is loss of the only green amenities space which is frequently used by residents. Previous request for a play park was refused due to government pipeline still in situ that has a three metre restriction on it. Not enough infrastructure for more houses, development is an infill development, potentially contaminated land on site due to the historic use of a slaughterhouse, concerns for the loss of heritage around the World War Two mortar spigot placement, increased traffic and associated pollution, traffic issues at the exit and entrance make the jump more dangerous and the road elevations are high, lack of space for turning and deliveries, reduction in biodiversity due to the loss of the wildlife corridor and increased ASB. Under the highways, the indicative layout is satisfactory, but appreciate this may change with when reserve matters application is submitted. And reserve matters application will need to include access arrangements, with each access being located to provide the optimum visibility on to Lees Close, at most western access being a minimum of 15 metres from the junction. Parking in accordance with adopted guidelines with measures to prevent the discharge of surface water from parking spaces on the highway. If you consider the provision of a footway would meet the tests for the NPPT, this should also be included. So if we look at the plan we've got.
Can I just say that the only thing that potentially we might have to remove from that is that the contaminated land on site, because the contaminated land officer has put forward, no objection.
So I think when we previously had it, they were going a bit further back towards the upper road. So I think you can't say reject to the point of that aspect because that has been dealt with. Junction still, I think they were previously going to do it more that way. There's two part areas there. So I'm throwing it over to you if you wish to check that. Grounds we want to keep going, but there is a smaller development, nothing we previously had.
I personally want to object still.
Yep.
I still think it's taken away one of the last bits of green on that state. Don't forget that the builder's yard is going to be built on. So that's going to increase the amount of traffic that's trying to exit out of, on Vicarage Road. There's only one way out of that state, pop away. These are another two that are going to do exactly that, but it's the last bit of green space. And then apart from that, there's one square. If they take that, they'll take the next bit. So I would object to it strongly.
Chris?
You've been too kind, sorry.
Yeah, I completely agree with that, I think the, I mean, each place is, you know, would be a bit, back to back right, could be a domino effect. Direct the plans, Breckland have been turned, so it's all. Now I would object.
I think I entirely agree and I think that why I was about to say you were too kind is that you said there's only one way out. There is, but it's also a very awkward way out.
Yeah.
And, you know, I wouldn't want to be encouraging more traffic to attempt the excitement of Vicarage than is absolutely necessary. And I do think that it's not an area with a huge amount of green space locally. It's a lovely thing if a child growing up on any road can find a green space without crossing a major road. And I think Lees Close is not well provided with just open space where a dog can stop or a dog walk along, we can stop or a child can play. I think we should continue to oppose it.
I'm in agreement, I mean, there's not many places in the sector where you don't get immediate access to a little bit of green. And I think they're really badly served on Lees Close and it would be losing their amenity that's well used.
Do know that residents do use that way to do a circular dog walk. You see them quite often, there's a path eroded inside of the embankment. So people go up there, walk around alongside the road to come back up Orchard Way or further as a circular walk. This would block off the access.
This would block off the, the access to that green verge alongside Mountford Road, which is used as a corridor to the amenity area. But.
To another one.
Can I suggest then that we reinstate our previous objections, list minus the play, the minus the pipeline of the contaminated land? Take those two out and support the highways comments and suggestions. Good job, Matt.
I did, but I'm, that makes sense.
Okay, I, I just think about the pipeline, it seemed rather cynical to me that, because we, we heard earlier that residents wanted a play area on there and were told that they couldn't because of the pipeline. Seems now that just by shifting the boundary, Breckland seem to feel that they can continue with this idea of a development in spite of it being near the pipeline. And it's a shame they didn't come back and say, oh, we realise now that we can actually build a play area there and, and, or allow the residents to have a play area there. Uh, because that boundary is no longer a problem. I mean, it just seems to me that it's not sad that Breckland are willing to push boundaries and find a way forward for something that they want to do. Uh, and yet weren't, weren't prepared to allow the residents to do what they want to do. So I just wonder whether we should still refer to the, I'm not quite sure what wording we've used.
Uh, previous request, play park refused due to the government pipelines still in situ.
Yeah.
That has a three-metre restriction.
I'd say that, I'd say, yeah.
I mean, you can put it back in if you want to. I can still have that on the.
I think we should, we should refer to that.
Okay.
Like the picture of the play area on that. But if we find it difficult, if they say so much, and find it difficult to understand how the, if that was refused.
Opposed to being chucked in. Matt.
I'll say one other thing. They've, they've drawn in the trees there rather nicely. They don't look like that in reality.
They're.
Quite grown out. There's a lot of evergreen growth in there. They will have to remove some to do that building work. So there's another piece of greenery gone. And don't forget that those trees provide the houses that face onto the road with a good deal of screening from that road, noise, pollution, all the rest of it.
No.
Um, unfortunately, the house to the extreme right won't have that privilege. It will be right on the road on a bank. You know, so that, that is an open piece there. That we're going to lose more greenery, not just the grass. Because they will cut them back in some way to try and manage it to do the building.
So reduction of trees in order to complete build.
See, at present, the trees don't cause anybody any problems because they're, they're serving a purpose that, you know, they are blocking out that road. When that house gets built there, they will be really in their way. They won't want them there. It's, it's a tiny little sliver of land that they're, they're insisting on building on. And yet we've got a massive urban extension that they could put as many hours on as they like. You know, build some up there is my suggestion.
Carla, your turn.
What I personally think is a wall in end but placement for the development. I mean, it is literally cramped in between a major road and a set of houses. I've marked that quite well. The trees are flimsy at best, but they do provide some blocking from fumes and, 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 and noise and everything else that goes on with, with, with one of the main arteries, one of the busy roads. Um, I can't imagine that the people moving there, obviously they're always, if, if you build it, they will come, as I say. But living close to a roadside, as the car is the disadvantage, is whether it's the noise, whether it's the, the fumes, whatever that may be. And as long as they're losing the green area, the current residents that is, they are really losing that, that, that gap that gives them that peace of mind between the main road. I mean, they are like, from, from the drawings, you can't really tell the distance. But even if they cut somebody over grow, they're not too far from one of the cars swerving off the road and then they're up in somebody else's room.
It has happened further down and back a tiny question.
From the drawings itself, I don't know how much, I haven't seen really the, the measurements, but it's so close by. I mean, you really don't have a breathing space between the road and the buildings themselves. And you, and you're imposing those restrictions and then you're cramming all of that on the, in the current residents, which is totally unfair to be honest with them. So I, I, I'd say, I don't think it's the right place for a build, for a build.
So we're going to object with the previous list.
Support highways.
Support highways consideration.
I'll check you back. Does it include mention of spigot?
Yes.
He does, yeah.
Great, thank you.
On to one three four six, this is eleven Water Lane, single story, side extension and garage conversion.
Move on. So this is the location map on Water Lane. So the existing ground floor and. Post-ground floor. You can see that it's in the upper left-hand corner that they're proposing to put the extension in. So that will be to the rear of the property. So let me go to this one. So they have the existing, the existing one and the post front. Oh. Too trouble there. Existing size. So actually externally, you can see there isn't a huge amount.
No, I think what.
Change to it. It's mainly.
What it does do is where there is a flat roof elevation, that it then becomes a pitch roof elevation, it's just, to my mind.
And there's a change to the window there as well, isn't there?
Conservatory that did go onto the back that's been removed. So the overall footprint is not increasing significantly more because the, it's moving the conservatory as well. Happy to support that?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Thirteen seventy-eight.
Yeah, just to say on that also, there was no objections for highways or the HBO officer on that one, they're content.
No, no, you're sorry, no.
No.
Oh, come on.
So the next one is nine.
Nine Fishaway.
Okay, so this is the map or location map for Fishaway, the area that we're looking at. And. See on this. Yeah.
Flat roof wrapped and.
Yeah.
Because you've got that bit under the window. It takes that. Small form all there. Generally, don't invite five.
No, not him.
But it's, I think, a sizable enough plot to accommodate.
There's no complaints from neighbours or anybody about it. There is nothing substantial to say against this. This isn't. No reason to.
This is important.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yes.
So back to an old favourite, fourteen oh five, three Old Market Street. We've got replacement of existing painted timber single glazed sash windows with single glazed like-for-like painted timber sash windows.
Probably helpful, probably helpful to read out what the HBO put. Okay, because this has been a bit of a table tennis game, hasn't it? He says he wants something, he goes back to something else, he gets told. Then as well, so. The HBO has no objection to the proposed renewal of the sash windows on a strictly like-for-like basis, including single glazing secured with a sprig and putty with paint finish. The proposed drawings, however, still refer to detail associated with the provision of slim light units from the previous refused applications. We will therefore require confirmation that the proposed windows will match the existing on a strictly like-for-like basis. This will need to be confirmed via the provision of the drawings that show all detail at an appropriate scale. May I suggest that we support the HBO's comments?
Yes.
In golf. So that's object to support HBO's comments, yeah? You never know, we might get one there. Who knows? It's got to feel like Sapples application.
Hmm. Fourteen nineteen, the Garden Centre.
Right, so it is with through to the Garden Centre. If only, eh? No. My computer can't keep up with me. So.
Good.
So that's the upper lot. Yep, so go on to the next one. So here we go. So what they did was they basically changed the wordings of the of conditions set out in the covering letter, variations of conditions, three, four, five, six, eleven, add to one. Which I'm sure you all read. And so there's no objections from highways, historic building officer, environmental health, Natural England. Fixing right on there. Hold on a minute, and if I get the application format. So. The proposed garden cent, uh, centre extension. Yeah, enclosure of existing open-sized canopies, replacement open-sized canopies, introduction of specialist retailers, adventure golf course, associated golf hub, outdoor play area, event space and additional. And so what the variations do is enable the development to be built in several phases, with the first phase not having to discharge some of the planning conditions pre commencement or preoccupation. So instead of doing it all at once, they're going to do it in stages and they literally will apply for, like you're doing a lot of builds, you do a phase, you get the permissions on and you do a phase you get.
This is additional car park. I mean, it's just formalising it instead of people just parking on the grass.
Yeah. That may be so.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I, I think, I think this is a quite long established, very successful local business, which in a way we can be proud of as a town. And they have, they have been able to move with the times over a period of decades. So they've come up with new developments and new ideas. I think these type, these new ideas broadly match the kind of feeling that people have nowadays. And, and I, I feel we should be pleased to support the change, the fairly limited change they're now proposing. Um, I, I just, I think it's great to be able to feel that we can support a successful and well thought out, well organised local business. Um.
Let's go for it.
I just like to add one thing, which is my old favourite, halfway green lane.
It is obvious.
We're encouraging cars in there, but we do have an, you know, green lane walkway here.
Yes.
Halfways, so if we encourage that surface to be improved, it's not on their land, but it could be something I work in conjunction with Breckland, Norfolk, um, to allow football. Because if we're trying to encourage people to walk through these places, you want to have a path equipped on.
Um, I don't know if that can be, that may need to be a separate, a separate request, it's not actually within the plan.
It's not in front of us, no. We need to put it on the radar and stop asking people we can have it.
It might be, what, the problem is if it doesn't fall within planning considerations, they'll just dismiss it.
Hmm.
So maybe a better approach is for a letter to be drafted on in association with the application as opposed to it not being a material consideration that they were looking at. I, I mean, the, the actual.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to stop the thing going ahead, but at the same time, you want to make most of it and make.
But maybe that's something councillor-wise that can be led within Breckland, that we approach them with a proposal.
Yeah.
That this should be done in order to support business and green strategies, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, rather than, I wouldn't want to put it somewhere there because of the process we're putting into it, it would just be dismissed.
Yeah, I understand.
So, you know, potentially perhaps something could be written, a letter could be written or something to go alongside that.
Hmm.
As, as opposed to.
Yeah.
I mean, who, who actually owns that?
Us, the county is responsible for the.
It's the end of Green Lane, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's the, it's the final part of Green Lane, really.
So.
Don't ask, you don't get.
Yeah, so I think if you write to County Breckland and potentially.
Business, but the residents around the other side.
Could we put it under GTP? We've got to look at.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Put it on the items we refer to GTP.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just don't want it to get lost, just because, you know, it's very process-driven planning, isn't it? And they'll just go, yes, no, yes, no, yes.
If you pay, it's good.
Okay.
So the, the one thing that occurs to me with that is there's car park in places allocated. Is there any cycle allocation?
I.
Parking. Because. I mean, like we saw in the, uh, in the HMO where they've actually allocated these for cycles, which is, you know, great because we want people to use that. At the very end of one of our lanes, it may, it would make sense that people could, because, I mean, more people are going there to do leisure pursuits than they are to go buy a handset. You know, so they might be able to do that going on a bike, that's what I'm trying to get across is, you know, less, less.
Good point.
Garden centre and more destination.
Yeah.
I'd promote sustainability as well.
Do you want to put supporter have a request that Garden Centre consider the allocation of bicycle?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Six two twenty-two, late planning up.
But we, we have two, but they go together. Would you be pleased to know? So basically, it's the addition of solar panels to the rear elevation of a roof. And this is at forty-five Earl Street. Here we go. So that's the placement. And you can see on the right-hand side, the back slope of the roof is where they're looking to put the panels. So this is your front-facing, is it front-facing? I can't, the writing's so small, but we're looking.
Yeah.
This is the, yeah. North-facing.
Road side.
Yeah, because obviously they'll stick it on the south, won't they? So, and that's what it would be look like on the south-facing. So that's away from the road. That's not what people see on the streets in. So. Yeah, so then that's just sort of like how many panels there'll be and where the slopes of the roof are. So it shows that it's dipping away to the back.
Happy?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Yeah, and it goes solar with the cost of light nowadays, I wouldn't be able to tell them otherwise.
So that was two because it's.
Reported, why not?
Historic buildings.
So, yeah, so, so it's one four three nine, which is housing, and one four three nine, which is, uh, one four four O, which is listed buildings. That's two.
Five, six, three, twenty-two, decisions of variance.
Um, to be honest, I only came back yesterday and I haven't gone through the decisions pile.
So we'll have those next month.
We'll have those next month to look forward to. I suspect there may be a couple.
Right, so five, six, four, twenty-two, items to be. Right, so five, six, four, twenty-two, items to be referred to Great Thirteenth Partnership. We've talked about the improved link there. And I just think there's probably a greater, I did raise it the last GTP about how we get improved access, um, there'll be paths, cycle paths and that, because at the moment we've got a Norfolk County Council budget which is purely a maintenance driven thing. You can't do any enhancement. The items that we're asked are too many and sometimes too big for parish partnership. You can only do one parish partnership a year effectively and we may not even do that with our budget constraints that we have. But we hear in the, the press about Norwich, Kingsley and Yarmouth having all these cycle, um, green things. They do make reference to the effort having something in the future, but I just feel we need to keep pushing this up the agenda. My, my little big bug there is the, the bit between top Canterbury Way Station Road up to the Mumford Road under the, the bridge where everybody gets stuck. There's no footpath along there. People walk up to work, the children use it to go to school. Surely in this day and age we'd provide a path. Uh, the, the land is there, the petrol dump doesn't need, you know, a good two metres of land there. But nobody seems to be willing to take it on and, and so I'm sure there are other places where we want to be improving footways and cycleways. And obviously there's links to what we've discussed previously. So whether we can wrap that up in that as a, an item that we would like to hear County Council's plans that they are bringing through GTP.
Because we did actually do, do you remember, for years around, I wrote a green infrastructure.
We did, yeah.
Paper, didn't I? So I've put Green Lane, put the surface of the pathway be improved to encourage sustainable travel to a successful local business and destination. And could the, um, sustainable or the green infrastructure paper be revisited, um, and future plans outlined?
Yeah. Especially as the, the Sioux is now well underway, people are inhabiting those places. The idea was this green infrastructure was the whole effect with a holistic approach to improving it rather than just the add on of the bought on community.
Yeah, because, I mean, everybody put into that paper, didn't they? Because they did it when they, they did it the old fashioned way in that GTP had, it used to have an, an officers committee. And so we would be given a project and then people from all the different organisations used to have to produce all the information. They don't do it that way anymore.
You know, the Chair of Cloverfield Residence, um, he had a large input into that, in that document, you know, it's still there.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's a good piece of work, to be honest. So, so could the green infrastructure paper be revisited and future plans discussed?
Possibly updated, because I'm sure there are probably some things now that.
Disgust and updated. Put it in there. Yep.
Okay, five, six, five, twenty-two, Suffolk County Council. We did talk about this last meeting that there was press reports that it had through.
But it hasn't. Well, not a call, not a call, the, I've, well, I have, I printed it off today.
Yep.
Because I'm often on the Suffolk County Council planning website for some reason. And actually it says, application pending a decision. So unless they haven't updated their website.
Their website.
I thought we were told it's gone through.
The press has, the press had reported it, that's where I got the information.
Yeah.
But that's from a newspaper report and not actually from Suffolk County Council. It's good to know this. Well, the thing is, yeah, I, so, I mean, it may well be that they haven't updated it, but that was prior to Christmas. And I've looked at other planning applications that have been updated. So as far as tall intents and purposes, it's saying that actually it's still pending a decision. So whether that's because the, the, um, some of the objections by the Wildlife Trust were upheld, weren't they, whether they've had to go back and renegotiate.
We'll leave it on there as an agenda item then to find out what happens.
Yeah.
We continue, we continue to.
Yes.
Five, six, six, twenty-two, community engagement.
Uh, I don't think so. I mean, obviously we'll need to write to GTP, so maybe in the future they'll put something up from there, but I don't think there's anything particular this month.
And five, six, seven, twenty-two, committee officers update.
Uh, no, I don't have anything else, um, extra at the moment. I will do, uh, send a paper on the variances if there is any.
Thank you.
Next month. Um, can I just say the variances, did you like the way that they were reported before that I actually just give you the report? And it's to note rather than reading, you've got some information at the meeting.
Right, that's the end of the meeting. Thank you all for your attendance.
Thank you.